I'd like to call the regular city council meeting of Monday, July 25th with a road call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Council members Ratty, absent. Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kerrigan, absent. Schmidt.
Here.
City Manager.
This is the manager of this call?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
Yes, let the record show Councilman Ratty just arrived.
Ed Lawson was right, 201. Welcome, everyone. It's good to see such a crowd here. I just want you to know, this is not the new senior center annex, though, okay? Might be a good idea. You could probably do better with it than we do sometimes. Okay, let me get to the next item here if I can. Okay, next, if you'll all stand for invocation, Speaker Pastor Barb West from the Sparks Nazarene Church.
I wasn't sure if I was in the right place or the wrong place. I'd like to read this song to you. Don't get real worried, it only has two verses in it. Psalm 117. Praise the Lord, all the nations! Exalt him, all you people! For great is the love towards us, and his faithfulness towards us. The Lord endures forever. Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we are thankful that so many people are out today to this fine city council meeting. And we thank you too, that we live in a nation where we can honor God, and that we can openly go to city council meetings and every place else that we wish to go to. Now, Lord, we pray that today you would give this great council wisdom. You know all of the things that are on the agenda. We thank you for Mayor Martini, and for all of the people that have to serve the city of Sparks. And so today, at this hour, would you come and be present here with us, and show these fine members what it is that they are to vote on, and what they should vote for, and how they should vote. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thanks Pastor West for those kind words, I appreciate it. Okay, next, if you'd remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Lawson, please turn your pledge. If you want to speak under public comment, please fill out one of these cards. And I have two to speak first, is Thelma Grayball. Come on up, Thelma. Did you want to speak on 6.2?
I was just gonna ask a question after. That's what she had to say. So, if I may, I'll wait for she to...
So, you want to speak on 6.2?
After, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then Julie, you want to speak on 6.2 also, or do you want to speak now?
I can speak on 6.2.
Okay, all right, we'll just do it at 6.2. Anyone else want to speak on comments from the public?
Where exactly is the public?
You are the public.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, we just...
Give a comment.
Just need you to fill out a comment card, Connie. You've been through this before, haven't you? Come on. That's what I thought.
It's been a long time.
Okay, thanks.
It might be helpful for those who have an agenda in front of them, that you identify 6.2.
I'll do that when we get to 6.2.
(Inaudible).
Okay. When we get to 6.2, it'll go right down in order, and when I get to 6.2, I'll ask for anyone else who wants to make a public comment, okay? Okay, next is approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? Not looking for a motion. Mr. Smith. Mr. Schmidt, second. It's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? City men, please vote. Passes unanimously. Getting used to the new machine here. Okay, next is recommendation to approve the regular meeting of July 11th. Minutes, any discussion, or any revisions or corrections? Mr. Schmidt.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second, Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Sorry, Mr. Ratty.
It's okay.
Just skipped right over here. It's been moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve the minutes of July 11th meeting as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Since the machine doesn't look like it's working, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, next is presentation, Scoutmaster Tom Cohn and the Boy Scouts of Troop 443. I think, George, you're gonna handle this? Come on up, George.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, city council, and all city staff.
Yeah, if you just want to make a line around there, we'll be fine, then we'll introduce you. Yeah, there you go.
For the record, George Graham has a special in City of Sparks. And what I'd like, this time, I'd like to acknowledge and recognize the Boy Scout Troop 443 for their contribution of one of the community projects that we performed at Signal Circle, and specifically, it was addressing of the cobs that we may have more easily identify, the cobbing, and it was just an improvement, community project improvement in that Signal Circle area. I'd like to also thank Mr. Stafford, Drew, his wife, and just everyone, and I don't believe this is even everyone that contributed that day, but I just wanted them to be acknowledged for that. And the leader was, oh, okay, Dylan. So, he brought all the guys together, and it's more, but these are the way that we're able to make it.
Would you like to say a few words, Dylan, and just say something for the troop?
Right here?
Yeah, just sit right down and talk into the mic.
I'm pretty, um, thank you for the opportunity to help me achieve my Eagle Scout, and I want to just say that I'm very proud to help out the City of Sparks. And that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak or anything? Go ahead, sir.
My name's Tom Cohn, I'm Scoutmaster 2443. We're located out in Spanish Springs Valley, and we're one of the larger troops with approximately 56 boys in it, in northern Nevada and eastern California. Projects like we undertook with the City of Sparks are integral to a lot of the boys' advancement to Eagle Scout, but also, the quality of the Boy Scouts is given back to the community. And a lot of people recognize us Boy Scouts by our uniforms, but don't really recognize the amount that they do give back to the community. We work with Washoe County Parks Department, the City of Sparks, see if we're able to do projects such as Hidden Valley, Scenic Overlook, the Bartley Ranch. If anybody happens to go down to Bartley Ranch, most of the projects you see down there were completed by Eagle Scouts, and they're recognized in the building by their names being up on the wall. We do a lot with Lazy Five Park, and also, we're, in terms of community service, one of the largest donors at the Food Bank in northern Nevada in terms of hours donated. We're up with Microsoft, and Sparks Fellowship Christian Church, and organizations such as that. So, you know, these boys give back to the community, and, you know, I'm proud to say that I get to stand with them. Thanks.
Some of them belong to you, don't you do that?
I've, well, yeah, one of them back here, and then I have another that's working at camp, summer camp this year.
Well, great, well, thanks for all the hard work you do with Boy Scouts. I know it's not easy, it takes a lot of time, and it's a dedicated effort, and we really appreciate it. And thank you guys for doing what you did for us. I know that area over there has been pretty bad for a long time, so helping clean it up, we really appreciate that, so. I have a certificate for all of you, which I'll come out now and introduce you one by one, and then give you your certificate, okay? So, I don't know who's here, so I'll just tell out your name and call your name. Come on up, Tom Cohn.
That's me.
Aaron Davis?
Not here.
Here, I'll just give the rest. Dylan Stafford? Andrew Coben is not here. Dylan Coben? Taylor Davis? Taylor Casey? Tyler Casey? Chris Johnson?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna assume that I'm not here. So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna put them there right in the middle, and then all you guys hold your prostration hands up.
Your prostration hands.
Yep, and we'll do a couple of these. And we'll have all of you guys in the other side. So, it's good to see our young people volunteer for stuff in our community, so. Okay, now, next is consent items. File one, anybody want to pull one? Mr. Lawson?
I'd like to pull 5.6 for further discussion.
Okay, Mr. Ratty?
I was just gonna make a motion.
Okay, go for it. Do I have a second?
I will make a motion to approve 5.1 through 5.5 and 5.7.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve consent items other than 5.6. Any further discussion? City men, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 5.6, Mr. Lawson.
Yes, I'm not sure, glad to address this to Mr. Briskel.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, this item was a little bit vague to me. I thought that we already had Lemons, Brandy, and Eisenberg under contract, and this back in the city, we're engaging them again. So, can you, I just need a little more explanation as to why.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson, for your question. Yes, we have been, under the professional contract that we have in the city attorney's office, we've used the services of Lemons and Brandy on various issues, and particularly on litigation involved with the Sparks Municipal Court. With the activities directly related to the court, it appears that if not with the next bill that we get shortly thereafter, we'll go over the $25,000 limitation, and so we thought it was appropriate to bring it in for the council. We've been made aware of the other details of it through attorney privilege means, but this is as a financial, and we thought it was important to bring it, to note that it's going over 25, and at this point, we do not know, and we're able to budget what we believe that grand total will be.
That was gonna be my next question, so, but right now, we don't know how much longer this will go on, or...
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have.
Questions, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have on the agenda significant fees. Do we have any, I mean, we're at $25,000 now, do we have any kind of idea where we're gonna end up on it with this? Is it gonna be over $100,000, or...
I defer to the city attorney, then.
I think you could probably expect it to at least double.
Okay.
If we appeal the matter. If I'm correct, the other side already has $50,000 in bills on this?
I couldn't tell you. I know it's pretty substantial.
Substantial. I think just for the audience members that are here to understand what's going on, is one department, the municipal court, has sued the city. So, the city gets the luxury of paying the bill for both attorneys on both sides, for employees to be suing the City of Sparks. So, it's kind of a very interesting scenario, so you're gonna be looking at $75,000 already, probably $200,000 of taxpayer money when we're all finished with the court suing the City of Sparks. So, not a good use of taxpayers' money, in my opinion, but I don't think we have any choice at this point.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 5.6 as outlined by staff.
Second, Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve agenda item 5.6. Any further discussion? City men, please vote. Passes unanimously. We'll get there, folks, trust me. Let's move on to 6.1. Consideration of possible approval of an application for a gaming license for CN Acquisition Sub, Inc., DBA, Skolay's Food and Drug Number One, located at 950 Holman Way, Sparks, Nevada, submitted by Mr. Jeffrey Lawrence Siri. Who's gonna do this?
I am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chief Kiefer, go ahead.
Chief Kiefer, for the record, good afternoon, council and mayor. Before you is an approval item for Skolay's Food and Drug, the applicant Jeffrey Siri, on behalf of Kalniva Sportsbook.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, aren't these items regularly under consent items, they're not general business items? They usually are. I don't know if it was on our part, that we checked general business, but usually they are. Because I think we give them sole authority to you, and both legal license and gaming licenses, that if you deem them necessary, they just become a consent item, and so, with that, I make a motion to approve this item.
Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
I will be abstaining from this vote.
I'm sure I was.
I work for Skolay's.
Okay.
And I think the rule of law requires that if you're gonna abstain, there needs to be a reason for abstaining, is that not correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's right.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve agenda item 6.1. Any further discussion? City men, please vote. Passes 3-0 with one abstention by Mr. Schmidt. Thanks, Chief. Okay, I think this is what we're all in for. 6.2, consideration of possible approval of an amendment to the local government agreement for the Sparks Citizens Senior Center dated July 23, 1990, between Washoe County and the City of Sparks, defining each agency's role in the center's operations located at 97 Richards Way. Tracy and Connie McCallum, welcome.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and council members. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. With me is Connie, and if you don't mind, I'll just give a brief report and allow Connie to share her comments of support. Before you is a recommendation to amend the existing local agreement that we have had with the Washoe County Senior Center since 1990. The actual city rebuilt in 1991, and with the recent downturn in the economy, as we're all, everyone's really struggling with their budgets and cutbacks, so we decided it was time for an amendment to the existing agreement, which basically just states that the City of Sparks Parks and Recreation Department will be providing the staff necessary to keep the center open, maintain its hours 9 to 5 mainly through Friday, a priority to continue the programming which Washoe County is going to provide. There's no community changes to the services currently provided. We're just providing supervision of the facility, and where applicable, we'd like to increase programming for the seniors with their input. If that's what they'd like to see, we'll do whatever we can to add it in. So, with the existing agreement and the amendment, the county will continue its part of the costs, which they've been maintaining the interior of the building. That's going to continue. So, they'll do the maintenance, they'll do the janitorial service, and anything needed on the inside, unless it's a major capital improvement project. We will continue serving the exterior of the building, as well as capital improvement projects to the outside and landscaping. The full-time person proposing to move over from 98 Richards Way is Tanya Lambshady. She's a recreation specialist, she's here with us today. She's very excited to move across the street, and be our full-time supervisor at that facility. And therefore, it's an existing cost, it's a community addition cost to the city. We will be providing a part-time employee for the afternoons only, because we'll still use the existing volunteer programming place to help us at the counter in the mornings. That person might be about $12,500 a year, will absorb that into our existing budget. Therefore, we're not asking for additional funding to take this on. The county has been generous to continue their part of the agreement, and their services, current services, equal approximately $84,000. In addition to that, they will continue to provide services for the Sparks residents through their daybreak program, senior services, senior social, I'm sorry, senior services hotline, social services, labor services, and Agent Disability Resource Center. So, with that, Connie, if you'd like to say a few words?
You're good.
For the record, Connie McCallum, chairman of the Washoe County Senior Center advisory committee, and on behalf of the committee that is unanimous in supporting this proposal, great of her, but the director of the senior center would be here, but he had to go to state the board with a thorough order. We have waited a long time to see this come. It's a shared partnership, I think it's wonderful, and the city and the county, I think, would make a great partner. This is a good thing to do in tough economic times, and it means a lot to the seniors of that community. We will think that we may have to close that center, they really protested emotionally violently, and as you know, they provide vital services there, most of all, the nutrition component, I think it's wonderful. And so, it means much to this community, and the joint effort to share it to all ages is even bigger than any for everyone. So, we're in a speaking favor. Thank you.
Thanks, Connie, thanks for coming, thanks, Tracy. Questions, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tracy, tell me what we're giving up here.
I don't see that we're giving up anything.
What would this full-time employee be doing if they weren't in this position or with the senior center?
Currently, Tanya does our, she works in the youth watch program, she does all of our grant, she oversees the grants for children, and she does programming for seniors, youth programming. She's gonna take that with her and do, continue that job from the senior center.
Okay, so this employee has no environment with any other employees in the City of Sparks?
Yes, she does.
So, what is your cost now, administratively wise, to remove an employee out of your management team to another building, physical location, and the inability to do their job the same way they did before?
I believe the impact's gonna be bigger now, and the whole package is $80,000. She's gonna move over across the street, she still has the same access to the staff, her supervisor's right across the street at 98 Richards Way, she still has the ability to leave the facility as she can, to do her job, she does a lot of site checks, she'll still have the ability to do that.
The reason why I bring this up, Tracy, is because, you know, we've been trying to make a concentrated effort to bring employees back together for efficiencies. You know, that's one of the ways you make, you know yourself, you know, having employees spread out all over the city, that costs a certain amount of money to do that. We've done studies to say how much money it costs one mile separation of the two buildings, so I think we need to assume that there is a cost here. I support this, but I think I support it for a different way than I think staff supports it. I support it because it's a need, it needs to be done. I don't support the county dumping a service that they provide onto the city. I think that that is business as usual when it comes to government. What happens is the federal government says, "You need to supply this, but there's no money, you go do it." So, then the state government says, "You need to do this, but there's no money, so you do it." And the county looks at it and says, "Well, we don't have any money to do this, so you do it." So, now, it falls upon the city to go and do it. I have no problem doing it, but I don't see the long-range plan for solution here. It appears to me that this can keep going on, and next year, you could come up and the county could say, "Don't have any more money," so now you have to take over the whole operations. What's our safeguard? What's our long-term plan? I mean, everybody here, I don't know if they know it, tomorrow night, the county's raising your car registration tax by 1 percent, that's 40 bucks per person, here to go ahead and pay for mistakes that they've made. How do we correct this in the long term? I have a solution, but, you know, it's, I like to see a solution from staff come forward, on how do you get back on track? Because I say shame on the county. The county, this is your services to provide here, and I think that you should be providing it. To cut the senior citizen services, and then turn around to the Sparks City Council and say, "You fund this, because we're not gonna do it," I don't buy that line of government. I think that that's wrong. You need to step up your responsibilities. If you have to cut someplace else, you made the priority to cut, you're asking the City of Sparks to pick it on up, that priority. So, I want to know what the long-term plan is to return this back to the county as a service. So, I can count a dozen different examples where the city ends up doing this for the long-term basis, because the county doesn't pay for it.
Okay, I can look further into that. Currently, the county will be providing the same services they're providing now, less the staff in the facility. There hasn't been staff in the facility for a year. So, it became a liability issue, both for the city and the county, to have volunteers, as much as their efforts were appreciated, to run and secure that building, that was a huge liability. So, in the spirit of cooperation, we felt this was a win-win. We felt, honestly, that we could do it as well, maybe better, but their service, we can't do it without their services. Those services will continue, but I understand what you're saying.
You're gonna be here next year. I can tell you, you're gonna be here next year. The county's already said they gotta cut $40 million of their budget between raising taxes and cut their budget. They've already been where there's another 10 percent coming next year. You're gonna be back here again, trying to figure out how to solve this problem. May I suggest that one of the issues that I see here is the wrong funding mechanism for this thing. You are using general funds, parking recs funds for this. The proper place that this needs to be done at is CDBG funds. That is federal grand dollars designed to go ahead and use in a community to support these types of organizations. Right now, so much of our money is going through the Reno Shelter, that I understand that's a problem, that it's completely dysfunctional, but, you know, we need to find a way to pull some of that pot of money back in to support this effort. There's more than one social services need in Washoe County. You can't have the Reno Center taking all the money down there, you know, the homeless shelter. It has to be distributed properly, and I would say that this needs to be taken to the CDBG committees, the Human Services Advisory Board. This should be properly funded and properly maintained, and not looking at general fund sources that, as everybody knows, is gonna become, it's very, very scarce now, it's only gonna get worse in the years to come. Thank you.
Are those CDBG funds guaranteed? Because those are gonna be going away too, the way things were talking about. Because those are going to be going away too, the way things were talking about.
My understanding, recently, I mean, we've lost CDBG funding for our programs with, for people with disabilities, and that's why we've gone out for grants for those programs.
And this thing isn't in force until we have another interlocal agreement, is it not?
If there's another amendment to be recommended, but the original agreement, I believe, was 99 years. This is the first amendment since 1990.
And it'll have to come back to us if there's more amendments, or if they want an amendment. It doesn't mean we have to amend it.
Correct.
So, Mr. Schmidt?
You know, regardless of how we got here, we have a large segment of a population that uses that center. And I applaud you for coming up with a solution, short-term, whatever it is, so we can keep that place open. I think what you've done is great, and I appreciate it.
Ms. Ratty?
Thank you.
Couple things. First of all, I mean, I can appreciate Councilman Schmidt's point of view, and clearly, as the resources are dwindling across the city, across the county, across the nation, everybody's struggling with how do we solve some of these challenges and how do we fund the most important things? So I can appreciate that. But I got to tell you that I'm getting to a place where I'm just really tired of the finger pointing that it's always somebody else's fault. It's the Republicans saying it's the Democrats' fault, it's the Democrats saying it's the Republicans' fault, it's the county saying it's the city's fault, it's the city saying it's the county's fault. And in this case, I completely disagree with that. I think that the county has been creative in trying to work with the volunteers and the seniors at the center to keep it open. They've tried some really out-of-the-box things over the last year and a half, and some of them have worked and some of them failed miserably, right? And the seniors have borne the brunt of that, but they tried. And one of the things that was really cool was that they got the seniors involved, and the people in this room doubled the attendance at that center because they cared enough to do that. And I don't know that that would have happened without the crisis, but what I think is that the county is in the same boat that we are, where taxes and the revenue is down so much that they're trying to figure out how to stretch every penny, and they've been creative about trying to do that. And Councilman Lawson and I both very much have an interest in the senior center and sat down and said, "You know what? County's not going to be able to pull this off, and this center is too important to let it go because of some regional fight." And so we asked staff to help come up with a solution, and they did. And it's a great solution that takes a little bit from everybody and keeps it open. Is it long-term? No. But I know what would be long-term. I know that if we let this close right now, it would never open again.
Never open again.
So if we're buying a year, and then we're going to be here again, and we will be here again because the county's got a $40 million hole, and guess what? We're probably going to have a hole next year too. But I think that we'll figure out if we work together with other agencies and volunteers how to do the things that are important. And that's what we're doing here today, and I don't think it's helpful to tear each other apart anymore. I think we need to figure out how do we work together to build things up. So I'm sorry if I'm coming off a little bit frustrated, but I think that there's too many people in this room who've worked really hard, really hard, to keep this open and to throw aside all the things that we disagree about and work on the things that we agree about. And this is an example of what happens, that you can make the things that are important happen when we work together. So I support this 100%. I think the county is pulling their weight. I think we perhaps haven't been pulling our weight when you look at some of the other senior centers and how the City of Reno has partnered and how the county has been carrying Gerlach and some of the others on their own. And it's time we stepped up and did what was right by the senior center, and so let's do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julia. Mr. Lawson?
I want to echo what Julia said, and I understand Mr. Schmidt's point, and I understand it all too well. But to me, it's right here, these faces, they're the people that make the senior center. It's not the brick and mortar. It's not the telephones. It's these people right here. And there comes a point when you have to say, "You know what? Forget politics, forget everything else. We're really here to serve these people." And that's what I think we've done today, and I hope that this passes unanimously, and I don't see any reason why I wouldn't. It is a small price to pay. It is a sacrifice on the City of Sparks' point. I do agree that Washoe County has responsibility to keep this place going, but they can't do it. And so what the alternative is, is that these faces don't have a place to go, and that's unacceptable in my opinion. So away we go.
Thanks, Ed. I want to thank Ed and Julia so much for getting this done and getting it started, and especially for staff, because this is the right, it's the right thing to do. You know, I think if our congressional leaders in Washington, D.C., could put something together like this, we'd be, we wouldn't be in the mess that we're in right now. You know, this is neighbors helping neighbors. That's what this is all about. You know, I understand about somebody not carrying their weight here, but you know, this is a different time. This is a whole different time, a whole different economy. And if we can't step up and help each other, then what good are we? We're no good at all. I mean, we just, this is something that we need to do, and I support this 200%. And I want to thank Tracy and your staff for coming up with this. I know it's not a complete solution, but it's better than the alternative, and Julia was very right. If we close this center, it'll never come back. I mean, we're looking at the same thing with some of our pools. You know, we closed one of our pools. It's never coming back, and that would be horrible. Plus, I'm getting to be the age where I'm going to be over there soon, so I want to make sure it's open. Any other questions? Tracy?
I would just like to add that the nature of Parks and Recreation is such that we have so many facilities, you can't run them with staff in a centralized place. In my opinion, to be efficient and effective and maintain that community support and rapport with the customers, you have to have a person in each facility. This will accomplish that. We've got a full-time person at Larry D. Johnson Community Center. That's all we've got there. We've got, the exception is Alf Sorensen. We have two people there, and this would make one at the senior center, and then we've got one at the rec center. We are a skeletal crew now, and yeah, it's a difficult time. But I just think that the nature of Parks and Rec, you can't run a good business from a centralized position.
Ms. Ratty?
And I think that that begs a great point. I want to make sure that our expectations with the clients at the senior center are good going in, that Ms...
Ramashetty.
Thank you, Ramashetty.
Thank you.
Does have a full-time job, and that full-time job is all about, you know, making sure that kids and everybody else in Parks and Recreation gets their services. And so she's going to be busy in an office. She's going to be making sure that that building gets open and closed, but she's got a whole full-time plus job on her plate. That part-time person will be there, but they will occasionally, you know, take days off, be sick vacations. And so I want to make sure, and I know it's true, that the volunteer efforts that have really come from the seniors at the center continue because really, it was understaffed before, and we really are going to need those volunteers to make this work over the long haul and make it that long-term success that Councilman Schmidt's looking for. So I hope, just because you see a couple more bodies in the building, that we keep that volunteer piece going because it really is important to the long-term success.
Okay, before we vote, we do have some public comments, so we'll call those up now. First of all, we have Jill Andrea. Jill, you want to speak or not?
Sure.
Don't take too long because I think the vote's going to be in your favor.
I'm tired. I had a big lunch.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. I've been involved with the senior center not as long as I would have liked to be, but for a while, and I've been very active with it. When the county pulled out their employees, we formed a private group, if you will, of the people that use the center. As one, the people that use the center want to be involved. They want to help you add programs and do things, but they also want to keep their socialization. And to keep this open, you, more than anything, you're gaining, not the fact that they have lunch there, but you're gaining, in many cases, people's only socialization in their day. And it's real important. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And just out of curiosity, everybody stand up who's at the center and using services.
Okay, I have a couple more. Thelma, did you want to speak? Come on up. You have three minutes. Is it Graybeal?
Take three minutes. Graybeal.
Graybeal.
Yes. I just want to thank all of you for your service to us and what the outcome has been. And you've worked really hard. Thank you, too.
You're welcome.
And I thank all of you for coming. We needed you. And it is a real positive program, and it means a lot to the City of Sparks, really does. I've been taking part in senior programs for about 27 years, so I know how much it means to me and how much it means to many others. Thank you again.
Thanks, Thelma. Nancy Cummins?
Mayor Martini, members of the council. I'm Nancy Cummins, and I'm here representing Washoe County Senior Services today, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address you. First of all, I'd like to really express the appreciation of Washoe County has of the City of Sparks, especially Councilmembers Lawson and Ratty, and especially Tracy Dominguez from Parks and Rec for their amazing efforts to help collaborate with us in order to keep the Sparks Senior Center open. The seniors who frequent the Sparks Center are a remarkable group of people, and they truly care about the benefits that a center like this can bring to the community. Through their efforts, as Councilperson Ratty referenced, participation alone in the Congregate Meal Program over the last year has increased 40%. Many thanks to the volunteers, many of them who are in the audience today, for their countless hours to ensure that the center has smiling faces to welcome participants every day. These efforts are instrumental to the continued success, and we really do appreciate all that they do for us. And again, the agreement before you today, I agree, it is a great example of how local governments can come together and the benefit are the folks behind us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, any other further questions? It's not looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed amendments to the current interlocal agreement between the Washoe County and the City of Sparks defining each agency's role in the City's, in the Sparks senior citizens' operations located in Ninety-seven Richard Way as outlined by staff.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Lawson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pastor Adams.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thanks for all of you showing up, too.
Thanks for taking your time.
We appreciate that. Okay. We'll see you down there for lunch.
Okay, next is 6.3. 6.3 is a first reading.
Ending the Sparks Municipal Code by adding specific provisions, creating the city's police department.
Linda, why don't you wait, wait a minute till they clear out? I'm sorry. It's my fault. I want pie. What's that mean? Don't point it, it goes away. Damn, what happened there? 6.3 is the first reading.
An ordinance amending the Sparks Municipal Code by adding specific provisions, creating the city's police department, revising provisions for the return of property held by the police department, and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2365. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, August 8th, 2011. Okay, next is 9.1, comments from the city council or city manager. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the clerk's office and as well as Mr. Dan Maron on analyzing some of the changes to our open meeting law and getting your agenda item into its proper form. You'll notice a few changes. I know that Linda highlighted it in yellow for you, where we've been mandated by law to change our open meeting public comments. We had two choices. One, we could have allowed public comment on every single item. The second was to have a general comment period at the beginning, and one, again, at the end, and then obviously always allowing for specific public hearing. Also, even though our agenda items specifically stated when you were going to take action and it had instructions on action, the legislature mandated that we put on every item that would have action, a comment that we had to say for possible action. So you'll see that at the end of every line item now that is an action item. And so, once again, between the city attorney's office and staff that is related to your government affairs and your clerk, we are in compliance fully with the changes to the government, to the open meeting law as it relates to agendas and your meetings. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. You know, me for one, I'm very pleased because, you know, we couldn't tell what was for action before. It was very, very tough to distinguish from other items that were on the list. So I want to thank the legislature for really clearing that up for us.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I was just simply going to add to Mr. Driscoll's comments that we have attempted to come into compliance with what we believe the Nevada law is. And like you say, it's a moving target most of the time, so.
It's a very normal concept.
I think Linda's done a good job. Dan's done an excellent job, his group as well.
Okay. Comments, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question to ponder, that on the comments from the city manager and council, action can be taken. It's just an interesting situation. We can make a comment and go ahead and vote for action, but we don't have to agendize the comments.
Well, you know, sometimes form over, yeah, form over substance. I think, I think action, taken in its most liberal term, in other words, after you have a discussion, you could ask the city manager to put something onto the agenda. Obviously, any matter that you would want to consider and vote on that has not been agendized would not be appropriate. So I think putting action there is simply to cover those individuals in our government that seem to have a target on the City of Sparks and its elected representatives.
It's just the unintended consequences of the legislation helping us out.
Mr. Schmidt?
Have we talked to the other entities to make sure they're doing it the way we're doing it, or we don't care? And the reason why I ask that question is because we're all on different committees, and we all have the open meeting law to deal with, and I'd like to see us all doing it the same way.
Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Smith, the format that we're using here is consistent with what Washoe County is using, and Reno was looking at adopting the same versions from there. There was no real prescribed. Washoe County got out because they had a couple of meetings earlier in the month, and so we looked at what they did. With the help of the city attorney, we have what we believe is the proper interpretation. It should be fairly consistent with what you'll see in your other boards and commissions. And as people make certain determinations, we will certainly review it and, if necessarily, make the appropriate changes in the future if the interpretation changes.
Thank you.
That's a definite maybe.
Yeah.
Ms. Ratty?
We could make it an agenda item at a joint meeting on how do we format our agendas?
Yeah.
Just kidding. Please don't, please do not, that was not a request. I just wasn't quite sure that I heard correctly, so I just want a clarification on the public comment piece. So public comment up front, public comment at the end, all the time. But then you said public hearings could be anywhere else on the agenda, but could we also have public comment anywhere else on the agenda? And I see the two as different.
Ms. Ratty, in the past, we had beginning, end, and then we allowed comment on almost anything in the middle. What is specified by the law is that you have kind of two choices. You can do a comment period at the beginning of a meeting and then another one at the end, or you can allow comment on everything on the agenda. My comment, and I apologize for not being clear, is that the format that we have chosen on your behalf is to have the comment period in the beginning, as we have had for the last several years. We added the comment period at the end to meet what was specified by law. Our agenda also has public hearings contained inside the agenda. We will certainly always allow public hearing for a stated public hearing, posted public hearing item. It would certainly be at the discretion of the chair, along with the board that is meeting at the time, that they wanted to take comments from the at the time, that if they wanted to take comments from the public at any other time, they could address that within the rules as we do currently. So the main thing that changes for us is just that we specifically are posting an additional public comment period at the end of each of our meetings.
Yeah, I think we've always been pretty good about letting people speak on agenda items that they want to, and I don't see that changing any. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. Anyone else? Okay, now, the most controversial, we've been talking about this all for the last 15 minutes, comments from the public. See, it's changed a lot. I can see that. Okay, next is, seeing that there's no further agenda items, we're a business, we're adjourned.
Okay, we'll call the Order of the Redevelopment Agency Meeting of Monday, July 25 with a roll call, please.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Agency Secretary Patterson here. Agency members, Ratty?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Kerrigan Absinthe? Schmidt?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Acting Officer Steve Driscoll here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Okay, I'll open up for public comment. I do not have any cards. Would anybody like to speak at this time? Okay, we'll bring it back to the agency. Approval of the agenda? Would anybody like to take anything out or pull anything?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Do you want me to repeat the names for you, Linda? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Recommendation to approve the minutes of the redevelopment agency meetings of June 13th and June 27, 2011. Any?
Motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period June 9, 2011, through July 6, 2011. Questions, comments, motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.